Yeah, someone this morning.
There's a greater of their like.
Yeah, I'm sure it's adjustment.
You want your road cleared or not? Yeah, exactly.
I don't mind.
Your gaps.
I like it.
Yeah.
I took the last one.
You think both your three sync maps and same one? I was just looking again and I was like, oh, they changed something again.
Let it rip.
Stop it. No, why? Okay, fine.
Everybody's taking options out of oil now.
I kept going back and forth, back and forth, and it was like, okay, these are the same ones.
Depending on how much involvement we get going on here.
Kelsey, how are you doing?
When the bottle fall out, you can be on the wrong side in a hurry. That's risky.
Yeah, I gotta start hitting.
Morning, Ben. I drove by when you were out shoveling your shop this morning.
I mean, we could.
What did she?
And Lake Region.
I think Sarah encantable.
Good evening, everyone. I ask that you please rise and welcome Pastor Dave Foss from Bethel Lutheran Church to give us our invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Good evening.
Happy to. Good evening to you as well. Let's pray. Thank you. Lord Jesus, as we pray to you this evening, thanking you for the day that you've given us, a day in which you were with us every step of the way, we just say thank you. And we pause before the meeting tonight to say how grateful we are that you know us, that you love us, that you hear all that we say, even what we don't, and you know us completely. Jesus, the men and women here in this room are here tonight to talk about the issues that concern the people of this community. So we ask that in their deliberations, they would be wise, help them to think rightly, fairly, help them to see the issues clearly, make good decisions. We entrust them to you. We ask that you would bless the community of Fergus Falls. Thank you for the privilege of living here. Help us to live in peace with one another in a time where so many are divided. Just bring us together and help us to conduct our lives in a way that add to the well-being of our community. So thank you again for these leaders and officials. Bless them. Bless their families. Help them to know your favor in their public service and in their private lives as well. So we pray that your will would be done. Thank you, Jesus. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, February 22, 2022, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Here. Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
We have a quorum. First item of business is approval of the agenda, and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. A couple council members have asked that item number 15 on the consent agenda be removed for additional discussion, otherwise asking to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, and we can do that with a motion?
Some of your honor.
Thank you. Second. Anthony, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose him sign that motion carries. Under, there are no public hearings this evening. Under order of bids, we have one bid to award, and that would be done by resolution, approving a quote from High Point Networks for an upgraded email system. We'll call on our finance director, Bill Sawmore. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, council. In your packet, we put a memo giving a little summary of the High Point Network. As you are well aware, the city has been on HCL notes for our email system, and I know maybe several of you, and I know there's other city staff too, that maybe aren't completely satisfied with that product. Is that an understatement? We don't pay a lot for the current system. You know, that's been one of the reasons why we've kept that for so long, you know, just like $3,400 a year. So we're not paying very much for the current system. But back in August, you as a city council did give staff direction to move forward with changing to Microsoft Outlook. So bringing you back a proposal to get that done. Our IT department did look at various different vendors to help us install that. It is a very complex system. It, you know, it may sound pretty straightforward and easy to change that out, but it is very intertwined with our mainframe system. For example, if you're gonna do a work order, the system will automatically email that off to our shop, to the individual people down there. So that's just a small example of how it's intertwined. But they've looked at these various quotes. High Point hit basically all the areas that we needed, you know, help with implementing this system. We're looking at a price, a one-time charge of $28,200 and an annual recurring charge of $30,600. Now, this one-time charge was a little bit higher than some of the others, but the annual ongoing is lower. So we'll make up that more we pay the first year within two years of the ongoing charges. Do want to note that one of our IT members, her spouse does work for High Point. He has not received any financial compensation by accepting this, but we want to be very transparent that her spouse does work there, but is not impacted by this, and that did not weigh in their decision as well. So the budget, we did include $50,000 within our budget for 2022, $20,000 from the IT budget, and we were using $30,000 from reserves for those one-time charges. So we will need to bump that up a bit too, as it states in the memo, for that $8,800. We'll take that from reserves as well. So yeah, I think I kind of hit very high level on that.
I have one question. The ongoing costs, $30,000, are those spread up like to the different interdepartmental funds and to the different departments? So it's not a simple, it's not a straight tax levy?
Right. What we'll, what we'll do is we'll charge that completely to the IT budget, but then all the other departments will pay their portion of that over to the general fund. So yeah, it's not all gonna come in the position of a tax levy. Water, sewer, stormwater, liquor store, the equipment fund, all of them will be paying their fair share towards this. We'll just structurally have it happening through the IT department.
Thanks, Bill. Would someone like to offer a resolution accepting the quote?
I'll offer that, then I have a comment.
Tom, thank you.
I'll second it, and I've got a comment.
Thank you, Andrew. Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, yeah, you know, I think, I think you get what you pay for. You know, nothing against our IT staff at all, but I've heard, you know, I mean, just the time that I've been here, I've, you know, run into issues with meetings not showing up on calendars and causing, you know, added time to correct errors. And I think it's just an outdated system, and I really look forward to having something that brings us in line with what most other communities of our size are doing. So thank you for, to everyone who worked on that.
You bet.
Thanks, Tom. Anthony?
And I agree with Tom that obviously the system we have is antiquated and granted, it's cheap. But the one question I got asked by a couple people was, obviously, was there anybody locally that could offer this service as opposed to, and I don't know where High Point are out of.
They're out of the Fargo area, I believe. I know they looked at Marco, did look at the Google platform, and not anyone locally, I don't believe. Liftoff was another cloud breakers. So not to my knowledge.
I mean, I don't necessarily think so, that there'd be anybody locally that can handle a larger sum.
And it is a very heavy lift on what we're asking for this consultant to come in, because so much of this is bringing all the old data over to the new system. Certain of those, the reason they didn't compare well is because they wouldn't touch the old data. You'd basically be starting with nothing. So if you needed to go back and grab this old email, it would no longer be available. So that's a big, heavy lift of getting all that data brought forward, and so it's still in Outlook then, and you'll have access to that.
Do we have a timeline on the mitigation, though, migration from one to the other?
I don't know if I can say that off the top of my head. Do you recall?
I don't, but we're gonna stick with it, and we'll ensure that it's as fast as possible.
Yep.
Thanks, Anthony. Any other questions before we call for the roll? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 An enthusiastic yes.
Yes.
Ergen. Yes.
A resolution. Thank you, Bill. That resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are, there's copies in your packet as well as on the board. There's 16 original items. Again, item number 15 has been asked to be removed, unlike any of the other items, discussed individually. See, now I would look to a resolution, look for a resolution approving the other 15 items.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista. Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
A resolution is approved. Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing the naming of NP Park Playground as the Dr. Allen Magnuson Playground. I know there's a number of council members who have talked to me. I know Sarah Duffy is here this evening. So Justin, did you want to lead up the conversation?
Um, I'd just like to have Sarah maybe come to the podium. She's put a lot of work and effort in this, so I don't want to steal anything that she may have to share with us, and then I can just add to it if you'd like.
Thanks, Justin. Thank you, Sarah. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council members. As most of you know, I've been in front of you before, and my name is Sarah Duffy. For those of you listening, and I am cheering up the fundraising efforts for redoing NP Park. So I'm here to ask the council for a resolution approving the renaming of the park in memory of Dr. Magnuson. As many of you know, Dr. Allen Magnuson passed away on September 25 of 2021 at the age of 70. He passionately served our community and surrounding communities for 40 years, from 1978 until 2018. And the children and families that he cared for were important to him, and he enjoyed following those accomplishments throughout their entire life. So I'm emotional because I am one of those children that he cared for and that he followed for my entire life. And he cared for my children until he retired in 2018. So I feel very privileged to, for him to have played a significant role in my life. And as I talked to his wife this morning, and I informed her that I was coming in front of the council, I said, you know, I wish I wasn't coming in front of the council to rename a park after him, but I think he's served so many children and families in our community that it's a really, it's an opportunity to honor a life. Where this playground is gonna be an inclusive playground for kids to play and learn and explore, and that's really what his passion was about, was children and the well-being of children. So when, you know, I was thinking about the park and his untimely passing, I thought, what an opportunity we have to honor a life that has done so much for our community. So not that this has a ton of bearing, but just to make note that Lake Region Healthcare has, isn't supportive renaming the park in memory of Dr. Magnuson. They have been a significant donor to the project. The foundation has donated $20,000, and the providers of the medical group are, they're buying the $40,000 toddler area, so like the marketplace area, they're paying for that equipment. And his family and are going to be additional donors and other donors within the community. As a result of the renaming, will likely result in donations in excess of $75,000 to $100,000 towards the project. So Lake Region has also offered to pay for the signage for the renaming of the park. And there was discussion at the Park and Rec meeting about, the board meeting, about renaming just the playground area or the bigger area of the park. And I spoke with Lake Region about that, and I think our sentiment is the same, is that whatever the council decides, we are very appreciative, but our preference would be that we would rename the entire park, the Dr. Allen Magnuson Park, or Dr. Allen Magnuson. I keep saying his middle initial, but we don't need to include that. And as I reflected on it after the Park and Rec Board meeting, I was looking at other parks, and there really, there's eight other parks within the city that have been named after individuals or families. And we don't have like a, with those renaming, we don't have like the playground named something different than the park. So those are WL Burnett Park, Adams Park, EJ Neuer's Park, Ferber Park, Godell Park, Robert Hanna Park, TH Johnson Park, and Van Dyke Park. So there is some precedent out there, if that's an issue. I just wanted to make note of that. So currently, we have about $500,000 raised towards the project. As you may know, the playground equipment has been delivered, and we're scheduled to have installation start as soon as road restrictions are lifted. So I would like to, you know, we're kind of firming up the final details and hope to have some sort of grand opening hopefully in July of 2022. So with that, I would like to, yeah, ask for a resolution to rename the entire park, the Dr. Magnuson Park.
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks for all your work and to Lake Region Healthcare for the partnership. Justin?
So thank you. Thank you very much for that. And as he's touched many lives, he's touched our lives as well. So thanks for sharing all that. And I think this is a unique opportunity. We have an unfortunate opportunity, but a unique one. And with that, I'd like to make a resolution authorizing the naming of the NP Park after Dr. Allen Magnuson Park.
Thank you, Justin. Scott?
Second.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'll just add to the chorus that he definitely touched our lives and those of our children, and he was a very special man. I think it's a fitting honor. So unfortunate, but we do this, but it is, it's very well deserved for our community.
Give a couple of questions.
Yeah.
One is like, where did NP Park come from?
Northern Pacific. It's the railroad.
Right, from the railroad.
Just to make, make, there's no restrictions to, like, there's no restrictions or anything.
Yeah, we did look at the deed, pull the deed, and there's no naming rights or restrictions within the deed, but it's, yeah, Northern Pacific is where NP Park.
Thanks.
City purchased it, sorry. City purchased it in 1943, I think, for a dollar.
So it wasn't even donated?
Nope.
Okay. Though we're happy to NP, and it's been a nice park for the city, but going forward, I think we have a new name for it. So thanks, Sarah, for your work. Any other questions or comments from, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
A resolution is approved. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we have one item, which we look for a resolution approving HRA, Small Cities Development Grant Housing Rehab Guidelines. And we'll call on Michael Olson from the First Falls HRA for any comments. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, Your Honor. Good evening, council. Nice to see everyone. So just a little bit of background here. We wrote a Small Cities Development Grant in Fergus Falls in 2015, and as part of that grant, there was a set of rehab standards that were approved by council. And we have a grant open right now, and as we've processed some applications, we've bounced a few questions off from our deed rep, who has responded with, you know, things have changed. So we took the opportunity to do some housekeeping in the old rehab standards. We've eliminated some, I guess what I would refer to as barriers to applicants, some asset limits that no longer exist. And redrafted, we approved this at our Fergus Falls HRA Board Meeting on February 10, and I'm here tonight looking for city council support. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone have any questions for my, well, first of all, if someone like to offer a resolution approving those changes to the guidelines? Thank you, Anthony. Second, Caroline. Thank you. Questions of Michael or of city staff? Appreciate your work on this, Michael.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
A resolution is approved. Thank you. Under presentation of claims this evening, we have claims in the amount of $500,427.64. And if anyone has any questions, we'll direct them to Bill Sawmore.
I would like to offer that we pay the bills.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no board committee, staff, or administrative reports this evening. Under old and unfinished business, we have two items, first being a approved, a revised scope of work, I should say, with Bolton Mink for the Aquatics Center. I'll call on Andrew Brumseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. I presented this in detail last Wednesday, so I'm not gonna cover everything, but just wanted to remind folks that the revised proposal before us would hone in on a aquatic center in the nine to 11 million dollar range. I mentioned last Wednesday, we're working with the state legislature to amend our sales tax authorization from 7.8 million to 9.9 million. That bill was introduced today, I believe, in the legislature. So that's in motion. If the city council wishes to move forward with this revised proposal, we're looking at a lump sum not to exceed amount of $27,050. And then, as I mentioned the other day, an additional fee of $4,000 for the renderings associated with that, which would be all the work that needed to be complete to get this on the ballot in November to allow the local taxpayers to decide whether or not we move forward. So the council needs to decide tonight if they wish to approve this revised work scope with Bolton Mink, and then we'll get that work moving.
Thank you, Andrew. Someone like to offer that before we enter into discussion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Krista. Anthony?
Been waiting since Wednesday.
Firstly, obviously, I appreciate that most people don't necessarily think the way that I think, and that's probably a good thing, you know, for most, most of the time. But, you know, I kind of want to remind that we are stewards of not only kind of dollars for the city, but also kind of, you know, land and resources. And, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna basically put a lot of concrete into the ground to do this. Yeah, I think we've, we're only just finishing paying for the library, and I think it would be kind of good to have a break from, from the extra sales tax. And, you know, we've got the downtown riverfront, you know, project that's obviously not finished yet. We haven't really seen the impact of paying for those on property tax. And, yeah, obviously, the first part is there. The second part, obviously, hopefully will be done. You know, included in that second phase, there is a splash pad, and, you know, splash pads, when you look around, seem to be becoming more and more popular. And I think, you know, before we, you know, go down the road of spending, obviously, you know, $10 million on a pool and then another $2 million in interest, you know, we should see how the splash pad plays out. I kind of think as well that maybe, you know, are we building a more complex center than we need? You know, is a rectangular kind of hole in the ground, you know, adequate? You know, Parks Prairie did something like that, and they were able to get donations for the vast majority of that pool. You know, we haven't really seen the Friends of the Pool step up yet. You know, when you look at the library, you know, the Friends of the Library really played a major role in raising money and awareness of that project. I think, you know, we haven't really seen that. So I think, you know, it's hard to judge. You know, the only comments that I get about a pool are obviously negative ones. I think, obviously, which this study will do theoretically, but, you know, we're only looking at the capex cost at this point in time, and we're not looking at the opex cost. You know, the pool is going to cost money every year going forward. And when you look at, you know, Breckenridge and Wapperton, you know, they have ongoing costs every year, you know, to the pool, which obviously would be a subsidy. And so, you know, how do we go from here? You know, I kind of wonder, you know, we have a resource in Pebble Lake, and, you know, if we put a million dollars into Pebble Lake, you know, what could we create? Minnesota is the land of 10,000-plus lakes, and here we are gonna build a concrete lake. And I think, you know, we, you know, we helped fund, obviously, Otter Express. You know, what would be wrong in us looking at doing, you know, during the summer, a shuttle that would go from downtown, you know, from the downtown marketplace to Pebble Lake so that we could shuttle kids? We also have a trail and a bike path by the side of that road. You know, we technically keep, we talk about bike master plans and things like that. Here we have a perfectly good route for cycling and walking, and maybe we should encourage people to do that before we spend more money. This is a commodity-based project, mainly consisting of concrete and steel and labor, and I think the estimates are gonna be very difficult to get right between now and the build. It's, it is so difficult to price anything today. You know, so the inflationary factor that you're gonna put into this will have to be big, or you're gonna cut your costs. So I think, you know, we also do have, obviously, pools, and, you know, the other, the other possibility is, you know, can we look at cutting a deal with either the Big Wood or the YMCA, you know, or the American, where there are pools in those facilities, even the school for that fact? Where we could open some of them up in the summertime for, for kids to play. You know, if we're gonna subsidize a pool, then, you know, can we look at the resources that we have within the community? And I would kind of, obviously, as you probably gather, I'm not gonna vote in favor of spending another $30,000 on a study. You know, we seem to like spending money on studies at the end of the day. And I, maybe we, you know, part of this unfortunately is time. I mean, this thing's gone on for a long time, but it's gonna go to the voters, which is a positive thing. You know, the, this is also just bringing up the, the chiller has also stimulated another conversation about people being reminded of how the ice arena got funded. And, you know, that's, you know, people are putting them together, that these two things are the kind of the same in the way that they've got put together. But I think we have to look at the other, other resources. I think the message is, as much as anything, what other resources do we have without spending $12 million on another, on another asset for the city to maintain?
Thanks, Anthony.
And one question I got for Bill is, with the fees that we proposed for this, how much of that is gonna cover the actual operating cost of that facility?
I do not know. I think what US Aquatics put together, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we can rely on any of that data. And typically, when we talk to other cities, you don't cover your costs with fees. They'll help offset the costs, but there will be a portion the city would have to put in. So we will subsidize it. We won't make money on it.
Well, I wasn't expecting to make money. I'm just wondering how.
But I do, I, I don't know, you know, how that will look. Now, Bolton Mink, are they gonna look at that in this proposal?
Yeah, they'll build a performer within this work, and then we'll be able to answer that question. I'll just say, these things always look better on paper than they do in reality, and I, you know, I say that coming from a city that had a pool. So we go into it with eyes wide open, and, you know, that's, that's what we want to be able to provide to the voters as they go to the polls in November. So that's, that's part of this work that's before us.
Yeah, Justin?
Maybe if I can add some other context opposite of Mr. Hicks, and, you know, he's, he's got some valid points. And so, you know, I think having Caroline and I have been the benefit of being on this committee for quite some time, you know, we're at a position where this council, when we got elected and made a path forward on projects, this is one of the projects the council directed staff to continue moving forward on. So there's been a lot of time, energy, and money spent on this, and so I want to make sure we're aware. We've, we spent a lot of time already on this from a staff's perspective, and I thank staff for the work they've been doing. You know, he, Mr. Hicks brought up the study. I don't view this as a study. This is unfortunately where we had numbers, a design, and numbers. I don't view this as a study. This is unfortunately where we had numbers, a design, and numbers pre-2020. And COVID hit, and when we came out of that, staff recommended going with a different consultant. So this isn't necessarily a study. This is more redoing the work that was already done. And we knew the numbers to be 12.6 million. And we went to the legislator back and got approval for 7.9. So today, if the decision would be by this body to not move forward, we can't move forward with the current plan if we wanted to move forward, because the design that we have is quite a bit more than we went to the state and asked for. So it's, I don't view this as a study or a waste of money. It's if we're going to have this be on the ballot, we have to have a design that is up to date with dollars and cents and a performa that matches it, so we can consciously go to the voters and see if this passes. With that note, you had mentioned the Friends of the Pool. You know, it's really hard for the Friends of the Pool to go out and ask donors and raise money if we don't have a design that we can share and show and have a scope of what the work's going to look like. You had mentioned the square pool. We got feedback from the community on what type of outdoor pool they want, and it was an all-inclusive, encompassing pool that basically was designed around the feedback we got from the community members. And I view this as, it's a cost of doing business to be able to put this on the ballot for our voters, not this body, to decide if this pool goes forward or not. It'll be a decision that our community members, our constituents, will vote this through or not. So I think we need to decide if we're supportive of spending money so we can go to the voters for them to have a voice. You know, I think, to your point about waiting on things, we do have a lot of positive things going in the community, the downtown, there's a lot of other things. But I feel like we find ourselves so often where we always pause, and we just got to wait, rather than, we need to continue moving forward. And I think this gives our voters a voice to say, yes, they support it, or no, they don't. And then we can pivot as a council accordingly. So I am in support of this. Unfortunately, we got to spend some money, because if we went to the voters in November with the current design, we don't have enough to cover that from our last proposal we got from Bolton Mink. So my thoughts are, if this body does not want to move forward to the pool, then we don't spend any money, and we don't even go to the voters. But we tasked the staff that this was going to be on the ballot for a question. This is unfortunately what we got to spend to get it there. So that's all I got to say.
Thanks, Justin. Tom?
Well, Anthony, I agree with you. More people need to bike out to D-Lagoon. 100%. It's very easy to look at the numbers, the expenditure, when we're looking at projects like this. But what doesn't get mentioned is the fact that something like a water park could play into the decision of a family whether or not they want to relocate to Fergus Falls. I mean, you know, my first priority is giving my constituents what they ask for, and I continue to get asked on a regular basis, when are we going to get our water park? When are we going to get our water park? And, you know, I think Anthony and I may be running different circles perhaps, but, you know, I hang out with families with kids, and a lot of those families with kids drive to Breckenridge on hot summer days to go and spend money. And we don't have anybody from Breckenridge coming here to use our pool and shop in our stores and eat in our restaurants. There's a lot of different factors that go into this, which is why I see it as making responsible investment in the community that is going to not only make life better here for the people that live here, but also it'll bring people in from a lot of surrounding communities to shop and to eat and to think, oh, you know what? Fergus Falls is a nice place, and I see that so-and-so is hiring, and maybe we want to move here because, you know, now they have a water park among all of the other things that we're going to have. So I support it. Yes, it's expensive. But, you know, like Councilmember Ernestson said, we have to let the people know exactly what they would be getting into. I mean, that we can't, yeah, we can't just think, oh, well, that might be too expensive, so we're not going to do it. I mean, we need to know what we're going to get and what it's going to cost. And look at it as making an investment, because other communities are making those investments, and we need to stay, we need to keep up to speed with them, or we're just going to fall behind. So, yeah, yeah, let's do it.
Thanks, Tom. Scott?
When the idea is thrown out that this is expensive, I guess my comment would be, well, compared to what? Justin mentioned that there's been a lot of time and effort put into this. And the committee that did the work to research, you know, what kind of a plan to put together, what kind of a pool to go after in the early stages of this, and this has been going on for quite a long time. It's at least a couple of years, if not four, isn't it?
We're looking at like seven.
And it probably goes back further than that. Some of the early plans that I remember hearing about were far more elaborate, far more expensive, and they were three times the cost. That involved connections with the YMCA and the school district and indoor-outdoor combination things that were going to be well beyond this in scope and cost. The committee did their work. They found what was reasonable and presented it. And I think that we need to keep going. I think that saying that we've got to wait because of this factor, that factor, well, that's what happened the last time it was brought up in 2003. Now costs have gone up, and in 2007, and the costs have gone up. We can wait until we never see it. And so I think it's time to keep moving. And this is, as Justin said, a cost of doing business, and I think it's appropriate. And that's why I support this.
Thanks, Scott. Any last comments of a resolution to approve the revised scope of work with Bolton Mink for the Aquatics Center? I'll favor that resolution. Roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Quamie.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Ernestson.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number two under old business is an RTC Phase Three update, and I'll call on Andrew Brumstad.
Yeah, thank you, Honored Councilmembers, and thank you for that respectful discussion. I appreciate that, and I think it needs to be applauded. So kudos to all of you. A few weeks ago, we had this on the agenda, and I said that we would punt it to tonight because the school district was going to be having a meeting with the school board, or Superintendent Drake would be having a meeting with the school board, talking about a location for a potential elementary school. And we were able to sit down with some representatives of the school district middle of last week, and we asked Superintendent Drake to be here with us tonight to talk about where the school board's at and kind of what the school may have in mind for the RTC. Once we hear from him, I may have some comments of my own, and then talk about how that may or may not impact the existing proposal that's before us to expend the rest of the funds, and if that scope should change. So maybe we can turn it over to Superintendent Drake, and he can talk about what the school's discussing and where they're at.
Yeah. Good evening, Your Honor, councilmembers and city staff. I appreciate a few minutes of your time this evening. The district has been exploring our options regarding our facilities now for about two years as part of our strategic planning process. And as we look at the development of the Lincoln School and the needs of our district, we're overcrowded at KSS. The plan will be to expand the finished product at Lincoln, move kindergarten out there at least temporarily. That will allow us to move fifth grade into Cleveland with fourth, and then have first, second, and third for the time being in Adams and McKinley. Looking long term, we would like to examine options to consolidate more grade levels. We really require families and students to move with quite a bit of frequency in the district as they matriculate from one district building to the next. It would be, I think, more convenient for families and a better educational experience if we could potentially build a K3 elementary building. Would afford some economy of scale on the staffing side for us, where we could be more efficient. And as we look at potential sites for that facility, the RTC site really jumps out. It is, in my opinion, an extraordinary location, one of the jewels in the state of Minnesota, I think, in terms of its natural beauty, a tremendous asset for this community. And as I look at the historic significance of that site, and in particular, the tower building, I think that it's worth some further dialogue and exploration if that couldn't be part of eventually a K3 elementary complex. My thoughts would be pending an analysis from construction management and also architect that that could serve as the main entrance with new classrooms, gymnasium, cafeteria built on the backside of that, possibly even in a horseshoe shape to continue some of the historic homage to the facility that has stood as a testament to this community for a long, long time. I look at it and think, in terms of what could that facility be put to good use to, is there a better use for it than to serve as a part of an educational system for kids? So the district would be very interested in having further dialogue with the city about the potential suitability for that site and its development into an elementary school.
Thank you, Superintendent Drake. Andrew?
Yeah, what I would add, Your Honored Councilmembers, is, you know, in talking with Jeff and other representatives of the school district, like he mentioned, they certainly envision the tower being part of whatever they're looking at doing. But the rest of the buildings probably aren't of a lot of interest to the school district. And so obviously, one of the major components, if this were to grow legs, is to identify funding to remove those buildings, which can be a sticky subject. I don't want to focus on that this evening, but there are a few, I think, benefits to the city of working with the school district on a venture like this. One being, as Jeff mentioned, you know, having this future, the future use of this site being a public use and more specifically educational, I think, makes a lot of sense for this property that's been publicly controlled for many decades. Identifying this as a use and pursuing it would resolve the issue that the city has been faced with for nearly 15 years now, which we've spent time. Let me just make a joke real quick. If we're talking about time, money, and energy spent on an aquatic center, this trumps that. So, I mean, we've spent countless, countless days, hours, weeks, months.
That's not a joke, man.
So obviously, bringing this to resolution would be beneficial, I think, for the community at large. And then discussing with representatives of the school district, if this were to move forward, we see other opportunities for growth and tax base within the entirety of the site. And that would be with housing opportunities and other amenities that could be added that would not harm but complement the school and the location up there. So that leads, I guess, to the council's conversation around the work scope for these remaining state bonding dollars. We're looking at doing renovations and preservation on multiple areas within the complex. And I guess the question is, is the council inclined to continue down that road? Or do we want to more hone in on putting money into the tower in terms of preservation dollars, knowing that whether it be this plan or any other plan, the tower's likely going to remain and be the staple up there long term? So again, I know that's a sensitive subject for many. It's been debated heavily. But if the council wants to pursue this and thinks it's worth, you know, the effort to go down this road, I would suggest that we have our city engineer bring back a revised proposal that focuses on the tower. There's plenty of preservation work to be done within the tower. That would stand to benefit whether it be the future school or any other use down the road that would utilize the tower. So that's the discussion this evening. Staff's looking for direction as to how the council wants to handle this. And I know that this is, you know, new information, fresh information, and potentially major information for some of you. So we don't necessarily need an answer this evening, but I guess, you know, more or less, I don't know if we're ready to pursue the existing scope of work that we've been talking about.
Thank you, Andrew. Thoughts from the council?
What I would just add, I think, you know, it's a lot of information and kind of excitement around, you know, I think in the past, we've always said, it's something that happens up there. It's got to be an investment in our community, or somebody in our community making an investment. And I think, you know, this is an opportunity to partner with an education to, you know, I think I've talked to a lot of people that that's a prime location for a school. And I think I could certainly get behind, you know, what you're proposing and dig further. I think as far as how it works with the existing dollars and how we could use those and not use those, and I think that's up for discussion. But I certainly would be supportive of partnering with the school and trying to find a use for that complex and the best use for it.
Thanks, Justin. Tom?
I agree. I think it's a fabulous idea. I've, you know, I've said, as far as using dollars for, you know, renovations or preservation, I think that should be focused on the tower. And I think having the school move up there is a great idea, and I look forward to working with the district on that.
I would agree. I think it's, we can, as Andrew alluded to, this has been punted around forever. And I think, you know, when you look at today's dollars, renovation of that facility is, it's unreachable, unattainable for any, you know, for most people to take the wings and make them into anything other than really housing. And then, you know, it's specific housing, you know, there's not necessarily any garages. I mean, I know that's one of the issues that, you know, the apartments up there have, is that there's no storage. And, you know, this winter has, you know, been one of those where a garage to put your car in at night would have been nice. But I think, as you say, it's, you know, we're more likely to get the funding that we need collectively and collaboratively to do something like this, where it is a collaboration between, you know, different entities. You know, we're going to need state dollars, you know, to do the renovations of the towers. We're going to need state dollars to help mitigate some of the other buildings. So I think this is a good idea.
So regarding, you know, what's before us, is the original scope of work that was outside of just the tower, does the council need more time to think about that? Do they want to give staff direction to bring something back just to the tower? What's the, I mean, I've heard three people.
I would stick to the tower and make a resolution that we have staff to come back with a revised.
Motion, probably, good, yeah.
Motion.
Sure.
Second that. Okay, so we have a motion to have staff look at what could be done on scope of work relating just to the tower. Scott?
This is new information, and it would have been nice to have had a little bit of a heads up on this. But I suppose it wasn't possible for any number of reasons. As it was suggested earlier about the Aquatics Center and the amount of time and effort that had gone into that, I think that we can then use that same argument as to what's been done to bring the proposal for the work to use the remaining bonding money to stabilize mothball what's up there. A good share of that already is for the tower with the air quality and security and windows. A great portion of that was for the tower already. The pieces of that that were not had to do with water mitigation around the entire foundation and then roofs on the east and the west. A project like this is something that would take a very long time to put together. And there's no guarantee that it would come together. You've got hurdles to jump through with shippo and funding that's going to be well beyond the scope of some $10 million pool. This would be a much bigger deal. And there hasn't been any discussion of other sites. You know, I'm sure the school has looked around, and they're real thrilled about this possibility. But there may very well be a better possibility that we would like to see happen or not. And so I think that to just dump the work that's been done and say, we're going to jump on this, premature. I think that we ought to continue on the path that we were going to use the money that has been appropriated for mothballing the structure. And it may very well be that the existing structure can be used as is and added on to rather than removed. And until there's more work done to figure that out, I think that it would be a mistake to stop the path that we're on and just jump because, oh, look at that shiny object. This is years away, and we need to act to preserve what's up there. As Mr. Drake said, it's an asset of the city, and it needs to be treated as such. of the city, and it needs to be treated as such. So I, I wouldn't support the motion to dump what we've done and change our course at this point.
Thanks, Scott.
If I could just maybe add something for clarity for myself. I, I don't view this as maybe dumping the work that's already been done. It's directing staff to hone in on just the tower to come back before us, which gives us a little bit more time to flush out some of the, the details that are going to be needed to move forward. I don't think it would be wise if this were to move forward, as you had mentioned, it's going to take time, and we spent money on stuff that potentially maybe isn't possibly used for the school, and then we tear it down. So I, I wouldn't say that we couldn't pivot back to the original scope if it came down to it. I view this as more giving staff direction to hone in on just the tower. There's going to be time and information that needs to come back to the council to decide. So I, I guess I view this as an opportunity to get more information in front of us. And we know the two different paths, and we already have one path in front of us today. This would give us an alternative one. And I view it as an opportunity to allow the school more time and allow us more time to digest it and look at what impact this would be if we just focused on the tower. That doesn't mean, at least I don't think it means that we couldn't pivot back down Path One, correct?
But, yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Ernestson, that's correct. We have that in hand. We can act on that if, if need be. And, and just to note, too, we plan to go through the tower next week with architect and engineer? I don't know.
Construction manager.
Construction manager. And, you know, that, I think, could be telling, too. If, if they look at it and say, Jeff, you're crazy, don't go down this road, then, you know, we still have this work in hand. And you're right, we would continue on the road we're going. If not, I think it, it behooves us to, you know, be prepared to do something different if, if this is positive traction that we get over the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, so I just want to be clear. I, I think it's, for us to at least explore this. And, you know, in time, we'll have more information. And it's not making us go away from Path One, if you want to call it that, if we need to go that path. So I, I support it. And I want to be clear, it's not, I'm not viewing this as we're totally going away from Path One. I mean, that's always going to be on the table, because we have that information. So, thank you.
Thanks, Justin. So we have a motion in a second. Any further comments before we vote on that motion? Everyone's, we're voting on a motion to direct staff to bring us back some options to focus solely on the tower. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeff, thank you for being here. With that, I do not believe there's any new business. Lynn, do you have any announcements other than the ones that are posted of the next committee, the whole meeting on March 2nd, next city council meeting on March 7th?
Maybe a reminder from our public boards department about snow and vehicles.
Vaughn?
Sure. Yeah, we're still under a parking emergency. So we'd appreciate it if residents would park their vehicles according to the ordinance, which is parking on the even side of the street if your address is even, from 5:00 PM to 5:00 PM the next day, and then the opposite for the odd day. So it just helps for getting the streets clear and passable and safe. So sidewalks also, if we could get residents to clear their sidewalks, would be appreciated.
Thanks, Guy.
Guy, could you, what was the policy one more time for the, the folks at home? If you're on the.
So if you're on a, if your address is even, you can park on that even side of the street from 5:00 PM on that day till 5:00 PM the next day.
Okay.
And then odd starts that evening, you can park on the odd side of the street till 5:00 PM the next day on the.
Okay.
But it's on the odd and even days, right?
Yeah.
So it's, people.
Even days, park on even numbers, odd days, park on odd numbers.
Yeah, starting at 5:00 PM for 24 hours.
So today is the 20th.
So just to be clear, though, if you live in an odd-number house, you're still going to park on the even side of the street on the even days, like on the 20th, for example?
All right.
Let's make sure that's posted nice and clear on our website.
Yeah, it is. It's posted, website and Facebook.
I'm going to go move my car.
Thank you, Guy.
Thank you for doing yours last night.
And thank you to your crews that are out plowing and clearing, and that's very much appreciated. They do good work. All right, with that, we're adjourned.
We did actually do that last night.
We got, we got all three of them.